Okay, I'd like to open the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, April 11th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. I'd like to call a meeting to order, and our first order of business would be to pledge allegiance to the flag. If everyone would stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Would the Secretary take the roll call, please?
Yes, Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg, he had asked to be excused. Commissioner Walls, also the same. Commissioner Kalidus.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
And Commissioner Bazey.
Here.
You do have a quorum, Mr. May.
Okay, thank you. Next order of business is approval of the agenda.
I make the motion to approve last month's meeting's minutes.
We need a...
Oh, I'm sorry, the agenda. I'm sorry, the agenda.
Okay.
I'll support.
Any questions or comments on the motion?
And that was Mr. King?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Take the roll, please.
Yes. And Commissioner Bazey.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
And Chairperson May.
Aye.
The motion does pass.
Now we can have approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of March 14th, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To approve the March's minutes meeting.
Motion's made and supported. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. Take the roll, please.
As to Commissioner Bazey.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
And Chairperson May.
Aye.
The motion does pass 5-0.
Next item is public comment on non-agenda items only. We don't seem to have any one here interested in making a comment, so we'll move on to the next item. Business items, none. We have other business and discussion items. Number one is zoning ordinance amendments. We have discussion of revised amendment language regarding accessory buildings, residential driveway standards, and other potential ordinance amendments. Mr. Ortega, would you start us off, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. So tonight, we're here to review some proposed amendments that we did take a look at initially several months ago. The business items we've been tackling have been pretty substantial, but this month, they all, for one reason or another, couldn't be scheduled for this meeting. So I thought it would be opportunity to bring this back. So before you are some changes as requested, and then there are also some proposed changes that I haven't yet included because I'd like to get some further direction from you before I include those changes. So with these amendments, the first amendment section is in regards to accessory structures in buildings and trying to modify those standards. On page one, the language with regards to having additional requirements for the accessory structures to match the materials of the existing buildings, that's as is proposed at last time. So there's no change in that language, I believe. That's something that seemed appropriate in... Based on your direction, it seemed like that was an appropriate level of requirement. And this is more conversational, so feel free to stop me if you wanted to go over these individually or that sort of thing as we go through. The next set of standards that was to be addressed was on, starting at the bottom of page two, when it came to detached accessory buildings. And the main impetus for this amendment language was the building department's request to have the requirement for a foundation for detached accessory structures less than 200 square feet, to basically require either a floor or a rat wall structure to prevent... to make sure, in an attempt to minimize the possibility of vermin getting into our accessory structures that are less than 200 square feet. Now, if it's greater than 200 square feet, the building code does require it. So this request is to have those standards to minimize that potential of vermin in those smaller sheds.
I had a question about the first paragraph B. Where we have attached accessory buildings, and we have deck included in that. I was wondering if it's appropriate to include deck under that.
That is a good question because technically, I don't believe that they have to be structurally adhered to the principal building, but they're directly adjacent to them.
They can be attached or not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they can be freestanding, adjacent to the building. I did run this language past the building official, and he didn't have that issue with including deck in that second line of paragraph B. And I think the reasoning, from a zoning standpoint, for having to add deck to that standard is because when a deck, while it might not be structurally attached to the building, because it's so close, because it's directly adjacent to the building, you know, the deck, a person walks out to it from their house, it's in effect, you know, a structure just like the principal structure. You know, its mass and scale are of a similar character. And so the idea here is to make sure that they comply with the setback requirements of the principal building.
The way it reads, though, it says structures which are attached. So if it's not attached, then it wouldn't be considered. Accessory buildings are...
Right, and that's why, I think that's why Fred's mentioning that, like, you know, technically, if a deck is not attached, should it be considered part of the requirement?
Yeah, so, but in this paragraph, it wouldn't be. It only says if they're attached, so they...
Right, so if a deck is attached, then it would be.
Correct.
But then a deck that is not attached, is what you're saying, is that's something that might not be. So I guess that is something that could, we could try and address with better verbiage to address that.
Because people will go around and just not attach it, then, is it?
Right.
Is that your thoughts?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, maybe if, some way, we can just clarify that.
Yeah. There might be another location in which to clarify that the decks need to comply with the setback requirements.
Does this kind of restate it here, where it says detached accessory buildings greater than 200 square feet? Kind of the same thing, actually.
Unattached decks could be possibly included in that next section under detached accessory buildings.
Right. And I think that's why there probably was, it was not included prior, but now it's proposed to be included now, to just clarify, decks that are attached also have to comply with the setback requirements of the principal structure. Whereas previously, if they were not attached, then everything in paragraph C applies, because they're technically detached accessory structures. But then they still have to comply with the front yard, side and rear yard setbacks to a degree. And then also, one other, to make things a little bit more complicated, certain decks and some, if they don't have a roof, are allowed to, as an encroachment, into certain yards. Because in that case, for some of our smaller lots, they're allowed to encroach. So that way, they can have a sufficiently sized deck. But what we can do is, I can see if there's a better way to have language that's more clear for that particular standard. So as I mentioned, that's with regards to attached and then detached. And it's with regards to the detached structures that there's a proposal to add language for the foundations and the rat walls. In that area. And then the remainder of the...
Excuse me.
Yeah, yeah.
Just regarding the foundations, though, we would have grandfathered structures in the city, though, after this. This won't be a... If you have one, we can make you take it out and put one in. There are grandfathered structures throughout the city. You know, sheds, you know, 200 square foot sheds, not on rat walls. And I don't believe that we, if it was put there legally before, this was actually an issue that was brought up at council just on Monday about a shed and a neighbor, a neighbor issue, actually, between two neighbors. But if something is there legally before, and they go to sell the house, then it, you know, we can't make them change what was there legally before. It is an existing legal, nonconforming issue. We can't make them change during a for-sale inspection.
But...
Anything going forward.
But on a sale, they would have to put a rat wall around it, correct?
No.
No.
No. It's a legal, nonconforming structure, though.
Right.
We can't, the city can't make somebody change something that was there legally before.
They did that to me when I bought my house.
Oh, did they?
And I did it for a apartment, too. They made them dig the rat wall around the shed before you can sell the house.
Well...
And I think that's when...
A cat yad is, is just about, though, if there are presence of rats or signs of rats, then we can make a requirement.
Well, there were no rats.
Okay. For you, well, okay.
And I think that's another reason for the addition of this language, so that it could be clear, moving forward, what is required and what isn't. Because there have been times when we've, the building department requested people to put them in, and they would. But then there are other people that choose not to do it, but they, when they do that, they don't understand how that's going to negatively impact their neighbors. So at least this way, with language in the ordinance moving forward, it'll be a point at which all new structures that are less than 200 square feet will be required to have them. And all those people that just chose not to previously, their grandfathered end are legally nonconforming. So they would not be required.
Change the verbiage that an accessory building under 200 square feet is going to require a permit.
They do require zoning permit. That is correct.
They do require zoning already now.
Yeah.
I thought Port said it, I think the under, on the website, it says anything under 200 feet does not require a permit.
It does not require a building permit. It does require a zoning permit.
And that's where I think we should change the verbiage, because...
Right.
Promise you residents are getting, if it doesn't say require a zoning permit, but you need a zoning permit, it's the same thing.
Right.
Just have a building permit and be done with it.
Well, I mean, yeah, that's a very good point, that we can add language to require, to indicate when a zoning permit is needing. No, that's a good point. We can do that, so it's clear. And in the same paragraph, or same breath, we can require that, so that way, people are aware.
Are we down into detached accessory buildings now?
Yes, and that's where the...
Okay. I had a question about D, where it says detached accessory buildings greater than 200 square feet in area, maybe less than 10 feet from a principal building. It's always, in my understanding, that a garage had to be 10 feet from a principal building if it was not attached.
Then it's true, but that it has to be when it's built to a certain standard. However, and it's kind of implied here, maybe it needs to be more specific. It can be closer than 10 feet if it has higher standards for the fire code. So, and it's actually listed in the Michigan Uniform Code, that the firewall can be, the wall adjacent to the residential living space can be reinforced to have a higher fire rating, and then therefore, can be closer than 10 feet to a principal structure.
Well, if we have a, say we have a garage that's set back slightly from the house. The garage door is on the front, of course. The side walls may be built to a standard, but does the garage door qualify as...
Then I'm not sure. That would be whatever the Michigan Uniform Code requires, so I would imagine that that type of...
Do we have to comply with the Michigan Uniform Code in that respect?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Because, well, if we add this particular language, well, no, greater than 200 square feet. So any building greater than 200 square feet has to comply with the Michigan Uniform Code, which is the building code. And so...
Yeah, we're saying it, we're allowing it within that 10 feet.
And actually, it's a provision in the Michigan Uniform Code that does say they can be closer than 10 feet when they're built to additional standards. So that's the issue, is like, before, the zoning ordinance never referenced that particular section in the Michigan Code that gave the residents that option. So, because honestly, most people tend to choose to not do that because of the higher costs associated with the fire rating. And so that's, I don't know why, if that was the reason, but the option of building closer to a residence was just never included, and it was just something that some residences on this asked, is there any way that they could build closer than 10 foot because of the size of their lot and their limited building options? And then technically, in the building code allowed it, but the zoning code didn't. So this would line up the zoning, or our local zoning ordinance with the Michigan Building Code to give people that option if they want it.
And I believe a standard garage door would conform. There's got to be a 30-minute burn on a door. That's half the reading on the wall.
Well, it doesn't do any good if the door's open, though.
Yeah, I see. I see what you're saying, Fred. Yeah, it's a sighting issue. It's a building location issue. Yeah, because if they...
I mean, if we have to allow it because we've adopted the other building code, then I guess we have to allow it, but I don't think it's a good idea.
I can ask the building official if the uniform code does reference about door location.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question on the accessory structures, number four. So the shipping containers, is this in all areas of Garden City? Is this just in the residential areas? Are they limited to...
Right now, as it's worded, it would just be with it throughout the city, as that's worded right there.
So I feel we should amend it. I have no problem with any shipping containers not being in a residential neighborhood. I don't see a problem with them being in the industrial part of Garden City. There's already a ton of them there. And there's some in the commercial part, as well as our Public Works and Police Department uses them for storage. So if they need them, there's no reason that certain businesses shouldn't be doing that also.
I think in an industrial area, they kind of fit in, but in commercial areas, I think they tend to detract from the appearance of the commercial area.
And actually, just recently, we have had some issues with just some requests with regards to commercial businesses wanting to have some type of detached accessory structure on site for additional storage. And technically, right now, we don't have any kind of design requirements for that. So we have positional requirements, where they have to be on the side or the rear of the building. But, you know, nothing currently would prevent someone from trying to use a storage container adjacent to, you know, in the downtown. And I don't know if that's something, you know...
Yeah, I think, personally, I would like to see them prohibited in commercial areas. M1, I think it's appropriate, probably, to have them there, but all the other commercial areas, I would like to see it not allowed, as well as the residential. Any other...
Is there any consensus on that, and how to change that language?
I tend to agree. I wonder if in the commercial area, could there be a time component?
Or maybe a restraint, that a restaurant can't have it and store food in it. I mean, I think it all depends on the business in the commercial area and where it's at.
Well, it still looks the same in whatever commercial area it's in from the outside. It, I don't know, it just doesn't lend itself to making it, making the area attractive, I don't think.
But anybody that has one now will be able to keep it, and it'll be conforming, not conforming, correct?
If they installed it with a permit, yeah. But we do have some that are going up without permits.
A shipping container requires a permit to be...
Zoning permit, to just have to position it on the lot correctly. Once again, but to the side or the rear of a building.
Right, right.
So.
Okay.
And that sort of thing. You know, sometimes there are concerns about the safety of them. If someone gets locked inside them, that can be an issue, just because there's no locking mechanism to, for someone to open it from the inside. Sometimes that's a concern. I mean, I don't know what the concern is about that. But is there any consensus, then, about commercial or industrial, or one or the other, or both? Maybe industrial?
Just to maybe reiterate my point, I don't know if maybe you have an inventory issue, or there's some temporary reason why you might need one. Maybe it's holiday season or whatever. So I would, I agree with Fred on it being more suited for industrial and a permanent basis. But in the commercial, maybe we could say something like 30 days temporary use due to some type of an overflow or something.
Don't we already have some language about using pods?
Yes. Directly above that is paragraph three, portable storage units. Those are permitted. And we've actually just expanded their use. Before, they, right in the current ordinance, they're only allowed for 15 working days every six months. But now, with this proposed language, they would be allowed to be on site for the duration of any type of construction or building permit. And that's typically what they're, we see the most use for them when that happens. If someone, something's being renovated, or it needs to be used as storage of work items for a project, pods are used. And just that technically, right now, if we abide and by strictly the ordinance, they would be allowed. I guess we would have to change. Also, right now, technically, the location of them says only residential districts, so maybe we can eliminate that to allow them in commercial as well for construction. So that would give people an option.
That makes sense to me. I guess the only wrinkle that may create, so under G2B, it references our undergoing renovation or remodeling, but if we're talking about businesses, like I said, it could be inventory or some other use.
So that particular G2B is specific only to the construction waste dumpsters?
Okay.
And then G3, so it kind of, it's poorly formatted, sorry about that, on the page. So paragraph three is portable storage unit, so then, on the next page, A, B, and C are referring to that one.
Yeah, but then they're limited only to residential.
Right, so maybe that does need to change to commercial.
Yeah, we might allow that temporarily in a commercial.
Okay. And then allow storage containers in the industrial?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the industrial. You know, they seem to fit in better there.
Yep, okay.
Should there be a limit, though?
That's a good point.
I mean, they could fill up their property with shipping containers.
Yeah, that's very true. I would not put that past anyone.
I mean, they could park a trailer, could they not?
Truck trailers, yeah. There's a limit on using truck trailers for storage, too?
Any vehicles on site are supposed to be operational, so I guess technically, no, unless, if their use lies as part of the, and then if they're, I think truck trailers that are part of a business that are stored for more than just, you know, the daily operation, they would have to be within an enclosed storage yard. You know, a screened-in storage yard.
Maybe instead of timing, is it quantity? So that would be more than 10 or something?
Mm-hmm.
That would be reasonable for the space versus...
Yeah, well, it would depend on the size of the space, too.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe those could be included in other structures where it can't be more than 50%?
Can have, yeah. We could have a percentage of the lot coverage.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking, like, looking at the lot coverage requirement. Maybe that'll be some kind of percentage of that.
But for commercial or residential, I think it should be limited to one.
Mm-hmm.
But in commercials, probably got to be more than 15 days. I think that's what they're up to right now, right?
Yeah.
15 days.
As long as they had an open building permit, then they could use it.
Well, yeah, if they have a building permit, they can keep it as long as the permit's good.
Yeah, well, if Mr. King was saying, what if they're using it for storage for a holiday season, in the commercial district for 60 days, for Thanksgiving through Christmas, and then they get rid of it?
I don't want them in the commercial district.
Yeah, it's...
Period. I don't want them there, period. You know? I just don't like them for commercials. We don't allow outside storage now in commercial. I don't think, I mean, this is basically outside storage, too.
Mm-hmm.
What if we want something like 30 days? I mean, 30 days is reasonable, as far as someone trying to get something done.
So you're saying for...
I'm saying...
For holiday season, when they have more stock or something, you would approve 30 days?
Yeah, under portable storage units, just we're tracking, and so the 15 working days being 30, and...
Just 30 days, period.
Yep.
No building permit requirements, just 30 days.
So just change the language there, 15 working days to 30, is that what?
That seems reasonable to me, and then would be, the location would be residential or commercial districts.
But are about 15 days are required to have a building permit?
And that...
No, that would be just for their own personal use.
So the whole 15 days per six-month period on one property?
Yeah, that's just if they need it for their own personal use.
Yeah, I mean, the purpose of the...
Retinue them.
Purpose of the pods, though, is for people who are moving, generally, they...
Right.
I got you.
Yeah, so...
So the 15 would be to 30, and they could use that for whatever. But if it needed to stay longer, it had to be covered with a building permit.
Right, right.
Exactly.
Yep.
While we're in this section, I don't want to muddy the waters anymore, but 154025G on page three about other temporary structures, I... on page three about other temporary structures, I, those collection boxes are making an appearance again. Of course, so we, of course, they've made appearances and no permits are, are being pulled is the issue at hand. But, you know, should we look at this again or some, and they've made appearance and some people, you know, that are involved in this, they think that they're prohibited all the way around. And our current ordinance does permit them, but only 180 days, one collection box per property, all of that.
Once they get there though, they tend to stay.
Yes, oh, yeah, well, I know, I know for sure.
Well, I definitely know ordinance enforcement is, is on it. And in the, for example, the one particular location which it came in, we're going to be prorating their, their timeframe from the day that it appeared. And so I, I'm making sure that the ordinance, ordinance is going to be on them on the 181st day.
Yeah. So I, I don't know what, what we're thought, our thoughts are or not, just the, they're starting to come around again and they, they seem to be cyclical. I don't know what creates the cycle, but they appear, we don't have them for a while, then they come back and then they, they go away. I, I don't know what does that. If somebody knows, help me.
I don't know. Do you, what would you like to see in that area?
I, I, I don't know. I mean, the, the issue is, is of course, the 180 days. So we do have some teeth because only though, the problem is, is that just like Mario was saying, we don't know when they appear, no permit is pulled, so then we have a hard time determining the start date. So for example, zone, or ordinance enforcement now is, we're really using the first complaint we have that date, but it could have been there a month. We didn't see, no one saw no one complained. And that's the issue.
But if they don't have a permit, it shouldn't be there, correct?
We allow them to seek compliance, get a permit and go from there.
Do we have a definition of what a collection box is?
Yes, do you believe?
Is it somewhere? Okay.
It shouldn't be.
I'm just, I'm on line at 154025, but I don't know if it's in definitions or not. And I, and, and my definition, my mind are those clothing, you know.
Yeah.
You know.
Big steel boxes.
Yes, yes. Then I'm, and I think what causes the cycle of them going away is that they appear and maybe the first couple loads, their clothes are really in there, but then people start dumping junk and garbage and everything else. And then the operator's like, okay, well, we're done with this. Take it away. Maybe that's what causes it, I don't know. So we receive strange things in our Dropbox that's in the hall, so I can imagine what happens in these, so.
Actually, we do not have a collection box definition. I'm, I'm sorry, I thought we had one. I definitely can include one.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Boxes, first steel clothes and stuff.
Well, we should probably have a definition.
Yep, yeah, we can add that. And honestly, in other ordinances, when it comes to these boxes, they.
Stricter where they can be dropped.
They really don't have too much beyond this, these requirements. Because from a zoning standpoint, that's really what we care about, the time, place, and manner of where they're located. Other communities choose to have them in their general law ordinance and they require a license or a permit. And that gives them a little bit more teeth to go after them immediately. But, you know, if they were having some on, throughout their community at the moment of the ordinance adoption. So I don't know if they're, you know, really, it's about, I would think the time issue and then maybe additional, additional districts or fewer districts, if you want to adjust that, but, yeah.
And also, if we don't have a definition, our ordinance says, you know, look up the.
Common.
The common, I'm trying to think of the.
Vernacular or?
Vernacular or the dictionary, you look up in the dictionary, what does this define? And then that's what we define it as. So anything that's not defined in, in the ordinance, we do that. We go to Wikipedia or Funk and Wagnall's dictionary, Webster's dictionary to find the definition, so.
I don't know, the, they do, I'm sure, have some benefit to the charities that use them.
And basically, there, some of the operators are under the false impression that there are some standards in the religious institution and light, institutionalized persons act, RUPA, that says that they are permitted to ask for charity donations through these boxes, and they are. But just because they're allowed that ability to ask, doesn't mean they're, it precludes the city's right to regulate where they can go. So they're, you know, they can't just be placed anywhere.
Yeah.
We still have the authority to regulate the time, place, and manner of these, so. And honestly, I think the language themselves seems okay unless you feel like there should be more restrictive.
And does anybody feel like there's, they'd like to see part of that changed or?
I, I don't understand why we have a collection box in an industrial area.
True.
You know, I think it's just.
Sometimes that's.
Right off, you know, Park Lane and all, I mean, it's probably.
We're not, we're not allowing them in residential and we have churches in residential, which many of them have these boxes.
Right, and technically, based on this, they, they wouldn't be allowed to.
Yeah.
Matter of how much enforcement goes after them.
We just look the other way about that or?
I'm not sure.
I don't think we want to add residential.
No.
No, we don't want them on, on every street corner, for sure. They, they would definitely show up there.
Well, I just, I just brought it up, just, again, it appears cyclical and we're seeing this upswing of the cycle again. I just brought it up for fun.
I'm sorry, it sounds more like it's about compliance.
Yes.
Than it is.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, where are we? Dumpsters?
Yeah, so we talked about the dumpster, the collection waste dumpsters, the portable storage units too.
We were on page four.
Yeah, correct, yeah, yeah. It was page four, it was this tents and everything, yeah.
Maximum duration.
And there was just some questions last night, someone just had one of those standard, you know, tailgate pop-up tents. Why would that be regulated? And so we added, I added a language that those are just exempt from any kind of requirements. So a person can have that in their yard with no problems at all. And the intent is they would not need any kind of permit for these, it was just a matter of allowing them for a certain amount of time, for certain events throughout the year. And it's just if someone attempts to have them for an extended period is when ordinance would come out and determine if they've been exceeding their allotted time.
And usually, they're used to cover junk in the yard.
Right, because if, yeah, if they're, if they're allowed to maintain for an extended period of time, they become, yeah, hoarding situations. So those are the extent of amendments for the accessory structures proposed currently. I guess I, I'll throw this in right now. In terms of those accessory structures, one of the questions, one of the commissioners brought up was this idea of, on certain sized lots, the accessory structure maximum square footage requirement seems to be, doesn't seem to reflect the size and scale that, that a larger lot can, can have. You know, we have our 250-foot deep or larger lots. Maybe they could have something that could, maybe they should be given the opportunity to have accessory structures on their site, given the scale of it, that they would not negatively impact the neighbors. And so my suggestion was, and I wanted your direction to see if that's okay, the idea of maybe requiring anyone that wants to exceed, any residential lot that meets a certain size, that wants to exceed our requirements, they could apply for a plot, they could submit a plot plan and get approval from the planning commission for something like that.
Well, we would have to have some basis for granting the approval though.
Exactly. So it would be, it would be an additional section, which we would say, you know.
I just, I'm just reluctant to go too far with that because we'll end up having commercial activity on these lots. They'll use it for construction, storage, or.
Home occupation, such as like a landscape company.
Have a small factory in the backyard or. I don't know. I, I just don't want to turn the residential lot into a commercial activity.
Yep.
Oh, there's that thing I worry about personally, there's that, of the larger lots. What, what's a process it would have to go through now?
Right now, they would just be maxed out at 1,200 square foot. So 1,200 square foot would be the max.
If you don't manage to own a large lot in urban city, except for a little more grass.
Well, I mean, you know, some of the larger lots, they were, I mean, they were never intended to be more than four gardening, you know, hence the name of the city, so.
I would like to see it changed to like Mario said, some kind of formula, have them come in front of us and possibly grant, I mean, at least residents would have an option. What they do with it after the building is built is really up the ordinance. If he's got an acre and a half and we let him go to a 2,000-square-foot building instead of 1,200 square feet, it'll fit on the lot size. It's not going to make it seem overwhelming. So I don't, I don't see why a resident shouldn't have the option to do that. I mean, we're putting huge houses right now in little lots.
Well, they're residential lots, so houses are appropriate. But I just don't want to see us allowing less appropriate structures.
I would suggest perhaps there's a way just introduce some math to it. And if we're saying 1,200 for a normal lot, and then maybe there's a, a very easy calculation of.
Could work that out with a percentage possibly?
That's what I was thinking.
Mm-hmm.
And then it becomes straightforward and we don't have to.
Well, what would, what would we say the, for that 1,200, what would we say the size of the normal lot would be? I mean, you're talking about.
10,000 square feet.
10,000 square feet or?
Well, the majority of the lots that are larger and deeper, they're about 75-ish feet wide and 300-ish deep. Those are a lot of the garden-style lots that are located, you know.
Yeah.
East and west of Middlebelt, over from, from Harrison over to, all the way over to Henry Rough, and then down to like Marquette and all the way up to Maplewood. And not, of course, in this northeast quadrant, those are the smaller lots. But those are the ones that I would think might be the most, you know, and they're about 22,000-ish square feet in area. So maybe the requirement, so it would be a requirement that maybe, well, 22, that's more than half an acre.
I mean, no more than 15%. Right, because if we're 1,200 today, that's, or 10,000.
Right. And you could max out the size of the building anyway. You could also say the maximum building of any, the maximum additional square footage would be 2,000 square foot total or something like that, you know.
Well, 15, yeah, 15% at 22,000 is 3,300.
Right. That's pretty, that's a pretty big building.
Yeah.
And I think Fred, you're right, the, the two, there's two questions to consider. One is the size and scale, the math I think we could work on. But then the other is the activity within that building. Given that these lots are 300 feet deep, if it is located farther in the back, you know, what would those lots be, buildings be used for? People do have a lot of recreational equipment, you know, RVs and boats and trailers, and that probably would be the majority of them. But there are definitely people that start a home business and then at some point, they do have to make that transition to either commercial industrial space. This might prolong that decision and then therefore, the adjacent neighbors deal with those issues. So it's a two-pronged question to you, I think. One, the size and scale issue, when the use is permitted. Obviously, they would not be, we could put in something where they're not permitted to do that, but then it becomes a policing and enforcement issue. Do we want to have enforcement trying to get back into the rear of people's yards? Technically, they're not supposed to go on people, on private property, so a lot of their enforcement issues are done from the right-of-way. So if a building is located 250 feet or 200 feet from the road right-of-way, it'd be kind of hard for anyone to discern what's going on back there. Right.
If it's 1,200 and we're thinking 2,400, something like that, could you say 1,200 but no more than whatever the math is, 8% of the lot?
Or one other way too, is you could say that any lot with more than half an acre. So that would eliminate a large percentage of those lots that are the garden-style lots because they're only about 300, well, maybe two-thirds of an acre or something because they're about 22,000.
A lot of them are right at about half an acre.
Yeah, they are right at about half an acre.
Yeah. Yeah, if we went to two-thirds or a whole acre.
So that's something.
Or what you were saying could work too. We could, we could increase it maybe to 1,500 square feet, but no more than a percentage, a certain percentage.
Something clean like that, just.
That, yeah, that doesn't leave a lot of. I don't know what the percentage should be, but we can look at what we allow now on a regular-sized lot and.
Are you meaning like a lot coverage percentage or, or percentage of the size of the accessory structure?
Yeah, I don't know.
Lot coverage is where I was going.
Lot coverage.
We're going with lot coverage. We already have a, a total lot coverage.
Thirty, yeah, it is.
Thirty-five percent.
Thirty.
So.
But on a half-acre lot.
I'm like, yeah, I'm doing the math now. 22,000 times 30%.
Six thousand.
But that includes the whole.
That's a lot. So if we say, if, if we go with the percentage, but no, no more than 1,500 square feet, say, or, I mean, is that a good number? I mean, right now, we've got 1,200 square feet, so this would allow for a little more, but.
I would like to see the percentage in there because there are some lots that are bigger than we have.
But what would, I guess in, to go, to do the math backwards, what would be the largest size you'd be comfortable with as a commission? Is 3,000 too big? 2,000 too big?
I would say no larger than 3,000, like that should be.
Yeah, I would like to go down to 1,500 personally.
I was thinking too.
Okay, 25, 2,500.
2,000 to 2,500, maybe 22, I don't know if we're running that crazy.
Well, with 2,500 and a 30% lot coverage, it may, it may not look out of scale. We have had, you know, accessory structures go to the zoning board of appeals and Fred knows.
Yeah.
So it's, there's always an out on the larger lots also. But I, I mean, I can see an increase to reduce any trips to the ZBA.
Right.
And to make it easier for the homeowners to have the larger structure.
Most of the year, I mean, I, I'm fortunate to be one of the people on a half-acre lot and all my neighbors are already built out. I don't, there's no one really. So I think it's kind of, it might be kind of an edge case.
Yeah.
So 2,500 then?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, but we, we need to look at the percentage of lot coverage, I guess.
Yeah, because it'll be a case by case.
Yeah, they still can't exceed 30%.
Right.
They still won't be able to exceed the 30% of lot coverage that we have now.
Okay.
Yeah. So if your house is 2,000 square feet, you only have 1,000 to go regardless.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
Depending on your size of lot.
Yep, yep. That works.
Yep. And so in that case, were we, are we thinking doing the math will be enough to allow them to do that? Or would you want to have the plot plan option where they come before you to require it? The only reason I meant, I was thinking about that would be is not to be onerous, but just to make the property owners understand that this is a big deal, basically, and that they would have to engage a contract. they would have to engage a contractor or something.
That would eliminate problems like setbacks and.
Right.
Utility easements and things like that.
Right.
Because on a lot of these big lots, the utilities run through the middle of the lot, not at the one end.
Mm-hmm.
But we can make those requirements as part of the application though.
Absolutely, yeah, that's the other option, is that we could just make these as, as language within the ordinance, is that if they meet that criteria, then that's another right there granted. We can do that option, or we could make the option of them coming to you to require the siding.
Those numbers, but that they also have to submit a plot plan along with their application.
Mm-hmm. And would that be for your approval or for administrative? I could see administrative.
I think probably be administratively, we'd be fine.
As long as they're in the parameters that are set in there.
Right, yeah, exactly. Yep, okay. I just wanted to make sure that the process was down.
Because if they meet the requirements, you can't deny them anyways.
Right.
Right, that's true. That's a good point.
Yeah, we just don't want to have them getting in trouble with some of the other restrictions on building on the property, you know, so.
Sure.
Well, to their credit, most residents do come in to request, they sit down with the building official or myself to go over their options on their site. So they're, they're usually good about that. Because it's a big investment, and that's the other thing nowadays, that kind of two thousand, twenty-five hundred square foot building, that's going to be pretty expensive today. So, okay, so thank you for that with regards to accessory structures. So then the other issue is amendment two as regards to, even though it's listed as impervious surface, it's really about parking and driveways. So my, the initial language that I presented to you was a little more complex than you preferred, so I did simplify it. So beginning at the bottom, beginning halfway through page five, the driveway standards here are, are similar to what's existing. And then I just really trying to clarify what they, what a residential lot is permitted. So paragraph one just requires paving, which is already required, of driveways. It just allow, I just added the language for allowing the idea of a pervious surface on there as well, just as an option to encourage people. It did include the driveway approach requirement, and just in the idea of limiting the other aspect that sometimes happens, where someone just extends, if they have the space with both a attached garage and a garage and extensive distance to their side lot line, sometimes they can get like thirty to forty feet in width. There are a few lots that actually have that, and I think that's part of the issue because then they have four or five cars lined up and they back up directly onto the residential lot. So the idea of limiting at the, at the property line to twenty feet, so that way it's, it minimizes the amount of concrete at the, at the right-of-way line. But then, as a property owner, once they get onto their property, then if they needed to, they could widen it. So then they could widen it so they could have additional parking. So that's the kind, that's the modification here, that they, then they're, within ten feet, it stays to twenty feet, but then they can, and width, but then they can widen it as much as they need, given how much space they have. So it is going the other way. But these requirements do, do state that there can't be any driveways within the, in front of the principal structure and the front lot line to maintain that residential appeal and that, that, the grass yard in front of the house itself. But then the homeowners get to decide, you know, so they can have with resident, paragraph three, residents with no garage or detached garage, she put me murdered on one driveway that is not located between the principal structure and may be printed in. And then in addition, they could also have one circular drive. So then a circular drive to, if they have the lot width, to have another circular drive in front of their home. And then attached garage, the paragraph four is pretty much as we have now, where if you have an attached garage, you can have a driveway located between the garage, the front lot line, and the nearest side lot line. So that's how it is now. And then circular drive standards, they did revise these to, to state that the maximum width of that circular drive aisle would be twelve feet, because that's some of the other issues we were having. People would create a circular drive, but then they just widened and widened it to the point that it's basically just a concrete parking lot. So in this case, it would be twelve feet from the entrance, whether it's, whether it's from the front lot line, or whether it's from adjacent driveway to curb in front of the house. The idea, and then also the idea would be to have a little bit of green space between the top of the circular drive and the home, to try and at least have a little bit of green, you know, five feet of lawn, something. And then on paragraph, page six, at the top of the, the page six, this is just something that is more of a functional and a safety issue. On our principal arterials, we do have some homes, especially most notably on Cherry Hill, but also on others, where residents have a driveway coming in, but in order to leave their property, they have to back out into Cherry Hill.
Yeah.
That's, that's a dangerous situation, so this would kind of find, let them put in a T-turnaround area, so that way they can turn around and then exit their property forward-facing. It's a much safer situation. And then previously, there were more language about parking and where they could or couldn't. Now, on paragraph B just says, if you have a paved driveway, you can park in the paved driveway. If you have it, you can park in it. And right now, because there technically isn't another requirement, and we haven't had in the past, paragraph B also does say, in the side, in the front, in the side yard, we do require pavement. In the rear yard, it just has to be a durable surface. That's just something that we've noticed that some people do want to allow to have that option of gravel, so, and some people want to have that option of gravel in the front. This language is proposed as some type of compromise, where we do require the pavement in the front of the house and the side, but once you get into the rear, if you choose to have gravel, you could choose to have gravel. That's, that's intended as a compromise. I don't know what your commission, your feeling is on that. Some communities do require hard surface throughout, just because, you know, the gravel has to be more maintained, even if you have gravel surface, that does have to be replenished after every two to four years, sometimes depending on the weight of the vehicle. But that was an option, so.
This, this would, language would prohibit people from parking anywhere other than the hard surface in the backyard?
The durable surface, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you do see people that have vehicles parked all over their backyard.
Right, and so that's the other compromise, I guess, but also benefit to this language is then they would have to put something underneath it. You can't just, you know, put on a grass and then develop the ruts and everything. It'd have to be gravel or compacted asphalt or something in the back, but not to the point of letting just the entire backyard become a unimproved parking lot.
So what do you do with the residents that are doing it now?
So because this is in the zoning ordinance, it would be the same as other legal non-conforming or grandfathered issues, where they would be allowed to continue. However, when they come in for any kind of new permit, new driveway curb cut or new driveway, they would have to meet these standards, so.
I raised two items. So am I going reverse? And number six, the only thing I would ask to be struck is the vehicle shall not be permitted to park in the T-turnaround. I mean, if I'm paying to put in, I'm going to leave my car there at night. I don't know. I get the idea here is that we don't want people parking in front of their houses, but the reality is on a main road, you've got multiple cars, you might have teenagers living at home.
Right.
If they have multiple cars, nobody will be able to use that T-turn though if somebody's parked in it.
Exactly, that's the only, that's the conundrum.
Yeah.
So is it functional or is it not? Or is that just a normal situation of a driveway anyway, where you have multiple cars, you're going to have to ask the other person, hey, move your car, regardless.
T-turn is kind of like the people parking on the side streets.
It is. That's a thing, it kind of is.
They want to park there and it's no different than my kids.
A little bit like kind of on Inkster. Yeah.
I mean, that's my view is, I mean, I like, if you don't want to park there because you don't want a car in front of your house, then don't. If you do, it's your property, you paid to put in. I don't know how others feel about that, but that would be my.
Do we want to keep that or eliminate it, or?
I can go either way on it. How does everybody feel about it?
I, I feel if we're going to let them put it there, they should be able to park on it.
Yeah, I think they should be able to park.
Because mostly you see those on main roads.
Yeah. That's what it might, so the cars everywhere anyway.
True.
So I mean.
Okay.
Can't park on main roads.
Exactly, exactly.
Hey, I guess that's another point too, yeah. You can't park on them anyway, so.
So it gives them a little more parking.
Yep, okay. So strike that seconds.
Which may be a little more controversial under A. So obviously, we have a lot of like nineteen-fifties brick ranches, and what would the commission think about maybe having this be a percentage? Like, you can't pave more than twenty percent of your front yard, because I think of all these single drives, again, there's cars on all the side streets. And if someone says you only get cars off the side street, and I'm going to put a little patch of concrete that maybe covers a little bit.
Five feet of in front of my car.
Yeah, it's twenty, less than twenty percent of wherever we think the right math is, and they can now get cars off the street. I don't know if that's a bad thing.
Especially during a small, snow emergency.
Oh, exactly. Yeah, I just, where do people put all these cars?
It's not like it was when the city was built. Back when the city was built, families had one car. I think the average family now, if you drive around, probably got three or four. Kids don't leave anymore.
I think there should be, I think there should be limitations. I know we don't want people paving their whole front yard, but I think giving some allowance, especially for these single drives, I would prefer that.
Are we going to allow them to park in front of the house?
That's what that would do. A certain percentage, a certain percentage.
Right.
Less than a circle drive and somebody parking two cars and then all right.
One other option could be, because we actually just encountered this today, actually, of all things. Right now, the, these, both in paragraph three and four, we're saying one driveway. In theory, if a house, you have your house, and in most lots, you only have enough space on one side, but if they had enough space on the other side, maybe allowing that second driveway, wouldn't, that would not be in front of the house, but it would still give them other parking options. Maybe that could be a compromise, rather than, I know, I know it really wouldn't address your issue, you raised, Commissioner King, about like our forty-foot wide lots when you just have a ranch, because I've been dealing with other residents that have had that concern. But it, it's unfortunate, it's kind of harsh, it's, I'm not intending this to be harsh, but it's one of those situations where like, if you feel the need, if you have, you're living in a nine hundred square foot or twelve hundred square foot ranch, and you have six cars, maybe you shouldn't be living on a twelve hundred square foot ranch, and maybe you should be moving to another, another home. I mean, there's certain points in time when you have to, we have to say that this is what's appropriate in these neighborhoods with forty-foot lots. But then I see one compromise of saying, but if someone has a, a space, like a nine foot or ten foot of space on the other side of the house, maybe they should be allowed to utilize that.
Yeah, and the smaller lots, that won't be possible because.
They won't have it.
They won't have that much space, but there are some areas where that would be possible, I guess.
Right. Like our sixty or eighty-foot wide lots, or two-forties.
So that would mean, so we're letting their concrete more of their front yard than the small, like twenty percent he was asking for in the yard. You'd have more green doing it, Commissioner King's way.
So to define the front yard, then you're saying the, the area that's directly in front of the house?
Yeah, so the, so if I have a.
From the house out to the.
Like, it would have to be adjacent to the existing single drive, and the resident would be allowed to pave up to no more than twenty percent of the front yard, or whatever the math was, maybe it's ten percent, but enough to where I could now get two cars and get one more car off the street.
Actually, that.
Porch.
But there's access issues though.
Yeah.
Because they're not going to widen the approach probably.
Right.
And then they're going to drive on the sidewalk to, to fit another vehicle. Often the setback is barely.
If the house is only set back thirty feet, they won't have room to swing over once they get off the street.
Is the issue that I see, you know, in the kind of the southeast or actually east side of town.
They would almost have to park on a right angle to the driveway.
Yep. Oh, yeah.
Right, and then you're twenty feet in front of the house, so if you're on a forty-foot wide lot, your twenty foot of it is.
Yeah, you've got half of the lot paved.
Right.
I'm fine, I'm fine to let it go. I knew it would be controversial, but I just, I'm trying to think of options for people who are kind of stuck.
I don't think they're going to see that so much in the forty-foot lots, as you're going to see it on the sixty-foot lots. Because I doubt if people are paving from their driveway to the sidewalk that goes up in the front, or, or three feet from it, slowly grab that extra five feet just to get a car on it. If, on a sixty-foot lot, most of the houses, you either got a seventeen-foot driveway or you got a nine and a half foot driveway. It depends which side you put it on.
Right.
If it was put on the nine and a half foot side, those people are trying to grab that five feet, or if the people put it on the bigger side, they're not going to.
I'm happy to let it go. I just thought of it there.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I think if, if we just let it go, and if somebody has a real issue, they can always go before the ZBA.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't look at it as much different than parking on a circle driveway personally.
Well, there's not many people.
They're going to park in front of the house, they're going to park in front of the house.
Yeah, I, I don't think most of these lots look very good with a circular driveway anyway, lots are too small.
Oh, we're permitting it.
I know we're permitting it, yeah.
Well, the thing about a circle driveway is that it's geometry in that point, because on your forty-foot wide lots, the geometry of having a twelve-foot wide arch where you can get a turning radius for a car just doesn't work, so that's why there, you don't see them. It's usually in our sixty or eighty-foot wide lots that you can get the circular drive.
Yeah.
And then in that case, the math of it and the geometry make, it's not great, but it's still, it, it functions for them. Exactly, it functions for them, and it's not, the yard is big enough where the, the circular driveway isn't, it is a majority of it, but, well, it might not be the majority of it. So it, it seems, like you said, it tends to work.
Okay.
We just let that.
I'll, I'll let it go.
As be, okay. All right.
We will strike the sentence and allow people to park in the T-turnaround.
Thank you.
Okay, so those are those ordinance amendments. So obviously, you have some changes to do to the accessory structure standards. I can bring that back next time. And then really quickly, with regards to any other ordinances we might consider, and they don't have to be part of this packet, this bundle of ordinances, we can do them later, but some of the issues that might, might present to you, when it comes to commercial lighting, there's been some discussion about the fact that some of our commercial properties just choose to not have any lighting at all. They don't turn it on. Now, technically, right now, the ordinance does require them to have it, but the ordinances don't, I think, go far enough to protect the residences by positioning the lights accordingly. So I think that's why sometimes you see, sometimes the excuses we receive are that, well, I don't want to impact the neighbors. Well, lighting can be installed so that it creates a safe atmosphere on the commercial property, it creates activity, it lights up the residential, the commercial properties, and then, but doesn't negatively impact the residences because they aren't shining into the residences. So, and one way to do that would be to adjust the minimum light levels from dusk until dawn. Right now, there's a current requirement of one foot candle throughout the site. Sometimes that can be a little excessive. I think if we modify the standards to say at least at the access points of the roads to the sites, if those had a minimum light levels, that would be appropriate because it creates a safe situation for cars accessing it, and it's, it's in the right-of-way, so it's away, it's afar from this point from residences. So I think that something like that might be appropriate to address that situation. One other thing, we have been, a lot of inquiries lately, they haven't come to fruition, but people want to, excuse me, some businesses want to install indoor self-storage facilities. Our current standards are for mini warehouses, so they're for the older style garage outdoor enclosures, excuse me, outdoor storage facilities. So the idea would be to add some standards for indoor self-storage, because they tend to try and go into commercial locations. We're not permitted right now in commercial, but there can be a range of activities. The one I always reference is if you, up on ninety-six, east of Middlebelt is. east of Middle Belt is Cloverleaf. So that building is this indoor self-storage facility, but they have a requirement, I don't know if they have a requirement, but they have windows, they have the corridors along the side, and then the rest of the facility is your standard self-storage. So I think having that retail frontage of a self-storage facility is important because it allows it to be incorporated into the site, community a little bit easier. So that would be an option if you think it's something to consider to bring forward. So I don't know, once again, these can be done now or they can be done later, but definitely with self-storage, they, there's a lot of them asking about.
Are you getting more interest in?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and actually, there are some recent vacancies of existing longstanding industrial sites that might go that way. So we, I, I feel it's relative, it's somewhat impressing.
Well, why don't we do this, but separately from this stuff we did tonight? That way we'll have a little more time to go over it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Were there, was there any others?
Nope, no others.
Okay.
There's no motion on this. Mario's going to bring it back, correct?
No, he's, yeah, Mario's just going to bring it back when he redoes the changes. Okay. Next item. Item two. MSHDA Housing Readiness Grant. Discussion of the available grant from Michigan Housing Development Authority to develop a housing plan.
Yes. Hi.
Good evening. So part, part of actually while I was off, I did apply for a grant on behalf of the city, and we did receive it from MISHDA. And MISHDA has, MISHDA is the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And they, they're creating a statewide, not a requirement, but a
Opportunity.
Opportunity, I guess, for, for local cities to look at housing opportunities in our communities. MISHDA sees into the future that we're going to need additional housing if we start to experience population growth. And they're also looking at other alternatives for housing, elderly care housing, more affordability, density, different housing types. And so when I applied for the grant, I put in that, you know, Garden City is a traditional community, and it is, it's laid out with, you know, 50-foot lots, single-family houses, commercial district, and kind of what, what we refer to as kind of a concentric zone theory of zoning, you know, commercial, residential, industrial, and one portion that in the city. And, and as we're going forward, we need to start to look at, we are not going to need as much commercial space as we are, we're going forward. The, the status has said that, and the shopping trends are just, is, are going, they're almost going backwards, I think, sometimes for local shopping districts. And we need to start to look at how we maybe be able to accommodate additional housing in commercial districts, increase housing in the downtown with density. All these, all these things are, are what MISHDA is looking for in the grant. And we need to start to look at and to perhaps allow and make changes in the, in the master plan for different housing types. So it, it is a grant for a planning study. It is $50,000 that we were awarded, $45,000 for the grant, $5,000 for a match from the city to do. But I know that the commission has been talking about the master plan, what to do with the master plan. This could be an opportunity to, of course, meet our five-year review and get it paid for. So I thought that was a good match for the city. And, and we really do need to start to look at, I, I don't think, I don't know, but 26-year-olds, some are buying houses and going forward and having, you know, the American dream of what was before, but many, many of that generation, they, they don't want to own a house, they don't want to mow lawn. And, and what are we gonna do with, you know, 6,000 houses that we have in Garden City? You know, what are we gonna do as we look towards the future? Will they always be there? Will, you know, apartments be the, what occurs? I'm not saying that has to be, but we need to look at, at that and, and to see, maybe we have, you know, identify neighborhood nodules of kind of collector streets that could have duplex houses, or, or on a corner, a quadplex or something like that, to where we could increase the density. By doing that, also it does create a little more affordability so that it costs a lot less to build a fourplex as opposed to a single family, because you're digging the foundation, you know, all of those things. I just thought it would be a good opportunity, again, for us to look at those kinds of things. Another issue I talked about elderly care housing options, those are called echo housing. And we really don't permit that, to, to have granny flats or something like that. And, and as, as I spoke earlier about aging parents, we have aging population also, and, and how do, how do we address that in our zoning? In our master plan, we kind of don't. And so we really need to start to look at that. And again, the opportunity was there, that I thought it would be a chance to, to take advantage of free money. Part of the requirements of the grant that I, I had submitted as our narrative was also to look at kind of an infill housing study where we can have more housing. And where, you know, part of the study would be to identify locations in the city where there are opportunities for additional housing. And, and we do, you know, you drive, you know, if you drive down some streets, there, there's like four lots there. Why aren't there houses there? Or, or what could go there? Part of Garden City Hospital, you know, behind Douglas Elementary. It's an old school, and how long will they, how long will they use that for offices? And what, what's the next use for that? And so I, again, I just wanted to let you know that we did get it, and we, the city council did accept it. And it's a planning study, and I, I think it's good for us to talk about it and then take advantage of the opportunity from MISHDA. So, and I included kind of the award letter and kind of part of the narrative in what MISHDA was looking for. So we'll be working with McKenna Associates to develop a timeline and a team going forward to look at studying these important issues for the city.
Okay. Two of the things you said though seem to be contradictory though. One saying that we might need more houses and another saying that we don't need as many houses as we have in the future.
Well, housing types is what I meant, really.
Looking for different types of housing.
Correct, correct.
Primarily.
Primarily, different types of housing. And, and again, I, I talked about quadplexes or duplexes or, or, you know, multifamily, you know, additional multifamily or multifamily space in the, in the city. For example, like say that, say that Garden City, the, the offices behind Douglas Elementary, somebody wanted to put in a, a senior housing community, we would, we wouldn't permit it, it wouldn't be allowed. And that would be something I think could be an opportunity, of course, for good development, and it would be, I think, a good neighbor to the neighborhood even really, but we don't permit it. And we, we need to look at where, where that could occur also. And so that's what I was kind of leaning at, because on top of it, you know, we can't grow, Garden City can't grow. And we're part of the urban infrastructure, and at some point, I hope some point sprawl will stop. And, you know, they can't build past Howell. I used to think you couldn't build past Brighton, but I was wrong. So, you know, so, but at some point, I, I think it will do that. And, and of course, as, as a younger generation, they, they don't go to work, they work from home, and, and commuting isn't, isn't a thing. They may want to live closer in as opposed to living so far away. I mean, we can't predict the future, but I think there are certain trends that we should look at and start to address here and be ready for it in, in the city.
And the, and the benefit of this grant is that during our exercise of the five-year review, a lot of the members pointed out in the existing master plan, why we talk about, and it's always the goal of having a community where someone, if they chose to, could, could live in Garden City their entire life. From going to school to having a young family, to having a mature family, to aging in place. But, and the master plan had certain ideas for a certain type of housing. But you've mentioned that during our review that those weren't the greatest ideas. Some of these, these ideas of taking some of the lots and putting new streets through and, and other alternatives. So the grant will be an exercise to go through, look at the alternative of the housing types. Look at the need. Are we gonna have too many hous, I mean, what type of housing types will be appropriate? And then come up with alternatives that are, that are beyond what the master plan thought of. So that'll be the focus of the scope of work, is, is going through that exercise, evaluating the needs of residents, attempting to evaluate the needs of future residents, define housing types and where they could go. And then changes to our ordinances as a, as a, as an action plan to, to get that low-hanging fruit, to give opportunities. Cause like Matt said, we don't have an opportunity. If someone that wanted to do echo housing has to go through PUD and has to go through extensive process, it might be longer. If we can make it more turnkey and then say that we're ready and willing to do that. If the study, if that, the study supports it, then yes, and then we can do that. So that'll be the exercises.
Okay. Well, we look forward to seeing that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we have commissioners' comments regarding planning and zoning matters. Van, start with you.
Maybe just briefly, the visioning session, so I think there might be some insight as to.
Maybe Matt.
Yeah, man.
Shed some light on that.
Just briefly, and that's all I have.
So, I am working on it. I don't have any, we're trying to identify, you know, how to create the subcommittees. And then Mario and I are starting to work on what the agenda will look like. I, I don't want everyone to get in the room, and then we have nine, nine opinions and we get nothing done. And so we're looking at what to, how to set the agenda. So it's on my plate. This is my 11th day at work. So, but that was another one of the priorities that were established for me to do. So we, we are doing that with the planning commission, DDA, and council.
So as, as commissioners, if we want to be considered, we let the chair know? Okay.
You know, or if you want to identify, you know, the committee members, three, you can do so now or, or at the next meeting, or how, how would you like to do it, is that right?
Well, the mayor approached me when we were together the other day and said that he was picking some people from the commission that he thought would be good on the
Okay.
committee. I thought generally, we picked our committees, but.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought also. I didn't know that was what was being done.
So I don't really know what's being done in that respect.
I don't know either. So it's news to me too. I, I thought you were gonna pick your own committee also.
Okay. Because we had a couple of people on, on the commission here that spoke up when, when this came before us, you know, and they actually brought it up and were talking about the idea. So I, I would like to see those people who were active in, in that discussion as part of the committee.
Who, who were the commissioners? I.
Well, I think Frank was, was one, and Mike Steenberg was one. And I mean, some of the others probably had ideas too, but they were the, the primary ones that were talking about it.
Okay.
So I think, I think it would be beneficial for you two guys to.
Okay. I will let him know, for sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Kelly?
I don't have anything.
No? Ellie?
No, nothing.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Matt?
I do not.
Okay. Mario?
Just that, some of the items that were gonna be on this meeting were not available because either the applicant didn't submit the materials or the notification was not published by the Detroit News for some reason. I don't understand. So, so there will be the rezoning of the, of the O1 properties on Inkster in your May agenda. There will be the rezoning of the rear portion of 3200 Ford Road, the Metropolitan Site on your agenda. And at least one site plan. Those will be items in May.
So we're looking forward to seeing you in a month.
Yeah. Okay. Well, the next regular planning commission meeting will be Thursday, May 9th, 2024. And if there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Made and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.